All the woman Jones? All of the Welch?
Here.
All the Green?
Here.
All of the Pers? Yeah, all the more matters.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to remind people out in the hallway that your noise does travel into here. So I, I appreciate everybody paying attention and listening. Okay, I'll try to get closer. And also if I could remind everybody to please silence their phones. Alright, Mr. Ketero is gonna lead us in the pledge and then start us off with a dedication.
Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fascinations into one united people, the multitudes brought out of hither out of many kinds and tons. And be with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government. That there may be justice and peace at home and throughout the obedience of the law. We shall show forth the praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness. In the day of trouble, suffer not our trust to need to fail, all of which we ask of Jesus Christ our Lord.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one power, and one indivisible.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll go right into public comments. We have a lot of public comments tonight, so if you can keep your comments concise. And we will definitely limit you to three minutes. And if you can make your point in less than three minutes, I think everybody would be appreciative. To start us off, we have Mr. Jake Vincent. Jake, are you out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey guys, I'm Jake Vincent. I'm way west of Brooklyn, Pennsylvania. I imagine I'm here to talk about something no one else is. I've been working with Taz for a while and sharing to potentially raise the sales tax in Jamaica Beach from seven to five percent to the commonly accepted eight to five percent across Texas. You know, Sharon ran some preliminary numbers and the average citizen in Jamaica Beach would spend, I think it's somewhere in ten percent of their yearly budget in Jamaica Beach. Most people are shopping at Walmart and Galveston. And, you know, it would increase our tax revenue. I think early projections based off of previous years were in a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year range. You know, it's mainly coming in from tourism dollars and different people coming through the city as opposed to out of our citizens' pockets. I've spoken with a handful of other business owners and, you know, we all are for it.
Participants are waiting in the lobby. To admit all participants in the lobby.
It's no money out of our pocket. It's no, you know, it's really nothing. It's just money we're leaving on the table as a state or as a city. And, you know, I would like for everyone to just kind of think about that and consider it coming up. Hopefully we can get it on the ballot in March.
May.
May. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna start with citizen comments from the audience and then we'll go to the vote. Alright, Lisa Maris? And I apologize if I don't.
Lisa who?
Maris.
Lisa Maris?
Maris.
Like a female horse.
Hi, my name is Lisa McCracken Maris on one six five one nine six three. I just wanted to speak with regards to the short term rentals. I, what I'm curious about is if it is voted and is voted to limit that, when would that be implemented? So it's more of a, that's a question.
Okay, we'll address it when we discuss it.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, next is Ms. Rosalie Chouse? Rosalie? Rosie? Rosalie? Yes, thank you.
Sorry about not cheering.
Yes.
That's okay. As long as I got a chance to speak out.
Can you, can you state your name and where you live, please?
My name is Rosie Techarci and the address is one six six one four Bayfront Drive. And I'm here, I drove two hours to be here.
Thank you.
And the reason I do that is because I think we have so many brains here. But why are we bitcoin against each other? Why can't we live in harmony? Because we all love Jamaica Beach. Regardless whether we are the resident or whether we are the SDR owner, we can work together, can't we?
Yes.
So let's find a way to do that. But first of all, we have to identify what is the revenue of STR? What is the contribution? What do we use the money for? And how many of them are registered and how many of them are not registered? And what are the troublemakers? We can punish them. So let's solve the problem, not just keep on having meetings. Okay, so that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Ms. Tracy Hurd.
Hurd, Tracy Hurd. I am, uh, Tracy Hurd, forty two eight East Bay Side Bay. And I am an SDR owner and I have a SDR number, just a house without any, uh, plonies whatnot. And of course, the reason I'm here is to ask that the SDR number plus the name of the house, not necessarily the owner. I fear that with the new cap we're going to put out there, that we're gonna see an influx of people in the neighborhood trying to put an application out there just in case they find themselves in a situation where they would like to earn some, uh, you know, money out of their investment property that they bought. You know, if you don't look up close in your backyard, don't live on a golf course. We all have Galveston because it's a wonderful place to visit and tourism is a huge part of it. So what I'm asking is that we can think about on this cap issue that's about to happen. If we see a huge influx of people putting in their applications, we're gonna have a long waiting list. So if one of the people that have been an SDR owner goes to sell their home, that new person that purchased that home will not have any opportunity to be an STR home. And then this home that is, you know, possibly on the bay or whatnot, that would've been a perfect place for a family to come visit Jamaica Beach, won't be able to. And someone else who was just a in case person gets up on the list. And I get it, y'all are trying to reduce the amount of homes that are available for rent, but I just think you'll think of that as an option that this SDR number sticks with us. We, a law abiding home, not necessarily just the owner. So in the event I die, my children can continue to rent the homes for their, you know, assets. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Mr. Russell Scavisa.
Russell Scavisa, one six seven one six, Pobeso, Del Paso. I'd just like to say on for the proposed cap on the number of STRs in Jamaica Beach, whatever number that might be. And honestly, I, I think STR is a good thing. It's a good thing to have a number of those in a community or a neighborhood. But we used to do it quite frequently ourselves about ten or fifteen years ago. Couple of times a year we would come down here. We'd have to preserve it a year in advance because there were only a handful of them on the canal, for instance. Now it's blossomed into three hundred or so. There's just too many in our community. And everybody talks about trash, parking, noise. Yeah, those can be issues, but honestly, sometimes I'm concerned when some, someone rents one around me. Just a couple of people, uh, they rent the house, they go in there, they're, they're there for a few days and you never see them. That's just disturbing to me. It, it just gets to the, the way the art, the proposed ordinance is stated. It's about the character of the neighborhood, you know, do you really want to have a revolving door with strangers in and out every two or three days? That's my biggest concern. So I'm for the ordinance. And also, I would like something to be done about the density. You know, if we wind up with hypothetical ten SDRs in a community, they're all on one street, that doesn't do any good. So sometimes I've seen communities that have a radius where when there's a deregistration that's proposed, you know, it needs to be within a certain ra- radius of other STRs just to spread it out some. So, that's it.
Next is Ms. Cindy Young. Young?
Young.
Young?
Young.
She's not here. She is here. I mean, she, she filled out a form to speak.
She's not here yet.
No, she's not here. She went downstairs.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Alright, Ms., is it Adella Knapp?
Yeah. My name is Adella Knapp. I have, uh, two STRs, one at forty two twelve, same name, and one at six, one six five four two, East Bay Side Way, Bay Area, for my pleasure. Um, I am very much against this new, um, ordinance that is trying to be passed because I intend to pass these houses to my kids. And what if they can't afford to, um, you know, to pay the mortgage on it? They will have to use, rent it to, in order to, to be able to afford it. Otherwise y'all have to sell it. And this is something that I would like for my kids to be able to, to keep on for generations to come. And, um, it's, it's just something that I, I understand that there's problems with the STRs. I make sure that, that my STRs don't have any problems. I make sure that, um, they don't, you know, I know, I understand that there's trash and all that. Well, go against the, the people, the STRs that are doing that, not against everybody. Uh, to me, it's not fair to, uh, to penalize everybody because of a few, um, STRs that are being, um, going against the neighborhood. So, um, I just feel, feel like there, it's not just STR. The, the STRs are not doing any, any problem. I, I love doing families. I love when families come into my house and they're able to enjoy our neighborhood. I don't, I don't allow pow- parties. I don't allow, uh, loud music and I make sure that there, there's no parking out in the street, which I see a lot of parking out in the street from full-time residents. So it's, it's not, you know, if you're gonna penalize the STRs, you're gonna have to go after everybody, not just the STRs. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon McDermott.
Howdy, everybody.
Howdy.
My name is Brandon McDermott, uh, one six five two seven, John Davis. First of all, I'd like to personally thank Alderman Green for being a lone council member to stand by their original vote on the two plus two maximum occupancy at the last meeting. Even in the face of all the backlash, he showed courage and said true to his word to the residents, so thank you. I'm sure the rest of you had a great reason for changing your vote and I can assume it was to find some middle ground to try to appease everyone. If that's the case, I can respect that. It was a noble gesture, but it didn't work. Already you have been issued at least one legal notice and probably more to suspend any legal enforcement of the previous ordinance and to halt any consideration of this new ordinance. Even as we speak, STR owners are currently in the process of creating a legal fund to raise money for additional challenges to these and all forthcoming ordinances regarding limiting the STR business. I mention this all because it should now be crystal clear that the STR owners will not be happy with any regulations that are passed by this council. Proof came when you changed your vote to make it more agreeable to them and the lawsuits came anyway. So please don't water down this or any future ordinance to try to stave off litigation from a small and local group. It isn't gonna work. The lawsuits are coming. The ordinance discussion tonight is not a fix to our STR problems, but it is a good stopgap measure to at least stop the number of STRs from growing. We can all argue about the maximum percentage of STRs in Jamaica Beach being high and many others think zero, some people think ten, some people think twenty percent. But the truth is, this ordinance reduces STRs through extension and we will all be going gray before we get anywhere close to those numbers anyway. That is why it's important to start now, pass this ordinance. So fight the good fight that you can't pay for. Some pass the ordinance to suspend any new STR permits. The lawsuits are coming regardless, so let's do what we need to do to get our city back. Please vote to suspend all further STR permits. Also, COVID days are behind us, thank goodness. I don't see anyone in here wearing masks, nobody in here is social distancing. In fact, we're all packing here sard- like sardines just like the good old days. So if someone wants to attend this meeting, there's no reason they can't come here and be in person. So why in the world are we keeping the COVID era call-in option? It's excruciating. It takes forever. No one's listening. Half of the room can't hear. Half the people in this room are on the other side of the STR discussion from myself, yet they still took the time to drive down here and talk about it because it's an important issue. So please, let's set up some more chairs and move to a bigger room, but please let's leave a formal call now. In closing, please pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Ms. Lee Pringle.
Hi, Ms. Pringle, sixteen six oh three, John Silver. I came tonight to speak about the proposed cap on STRs. So I want to start with full transparency, letting you guys know that I am a full-time resident here in Jamaica Beach. We love it here. It was one of the best decisions we made five years ago. I'm also the co-owner of Pacific Properties Management, where we manage nine client properties here in this city. Let me be clear, I do not own an STR. We only manage them. But tonight I come to you just as a resident. As I read through the agenda for tonight and it just didn't sit right with me and I had a couple of concerns. So I just cautioned to hastily vote in a new ordinance without truly considering what it means to each of us personally. On a personal note, I consider the fact that I am a part of an aging community and should my husband or I have to be in the medical center or need closer attention in the medical center for a time being, I would not be able to keep my home and STR in, in the interim. I also considered, okay, my husband who travels internationally for work, should he be transferred for a limited time, we would not have the option to STR our home. I've lost a parent recently and I also considered that one of the things that we voice to our kids, like you mentioned, is, um, we wouldn't want them to sell the home. We love Jamaica Beach, they love Jamaica Beach, to share holidays, vacations here while STRing to keep our home and our family. So all of this would kind of stop. So before you hope tonight, you vote tonight, I do want that you do consider potential ramifications that could come with this. Um, before you do it to me, yourself, our neighbors, we all kind of want the option if we were to be stuck in a place. I think the ordinances that are placed, that we've already passed, they're reasonable. I'm excited to continue dialogue. I've met with Mayor Bauer and Bailey and they are more than willing to listen, discuss, explain, um, views and all while hearing our concerns. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, next is Mr. Jeff Wright.
Jack?
Jack.
Or Jeff Wright?
Jeff, or Jack Wright.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Jeff Wright. Our home that we have here is sixteen five five six, Pompano Way. It's the lived the dream house, uh, Texas house, as you might know it. Um, we've been owners here since, uh, two thousand fifteen. We started renting in two thousand sixteen. I gotta tell you, I'm really disappointed to be here. I think what y'all are doing is shameful. I think what you're doing is unconstitutional. And I'm just grateful we live in Texas. Uh, but this is something I would expect in San Francisco or Seattle. The ordinance you passed already and this new ordinance you're considering, just, just the fact you're considering limited housing, uh, STRs in the community, you're basically cutting somewhere between twenty-five and forty percent of everyone in this room, residents and STRs, uh, property values in the process. Well, thank you, sir. Tell me where to vote. I appreciate it.
No, you're fine. I would just say, address the council.
I am, sir. And I, I, I just think this is a terrible idea. Uh, I think the, just because it might feel good or some kind of compromise you all made, it doesn't change the fact that it's unconstitutional. The state of Texas has already set up and spoken on, on quote, long-term and short-term rentals. And how many people live from occupancy level? And it's three per bedroom, alright? And thankfully in Texas here, they passed a law, and it's the Regulatory Consistency Act, which prohibits, uh, local governments from the overreach of a city in, in situations like this where something's already been clarified by the state legislature. And I, I just can't believe we're, we're at this point where y'all are, are, are trying to, to take our constitutional rights. I served in the United States Marine and, and I'm, I'm here to fight for my rights. And, and I think what you're doing is wrong, uh, unconscionable, just because it feels good to a certain group. The laws, the, the problem is disturbances. And I think that's, that's a legitimate concern. But we've got the laws in the books, noise complaints. Why don't we enforce the noise complaints? You know, when I rent a car from a, uh, from a rental car agency, uh, you know, if, if something, if I, if I drive drunk or get arrested or pulled over for speeding, they don't go after the rental car company, they go after the individual. The individuals that are there, we do what we can to protect, uh, and, and we post everything in advance long before y'all come up with these ideas. And, and we are very good owners. We treat people right. But the bottom line is, what you're doing is not right. Go after it. You've got the laws in the books. This kind of reminds me of when other, one of the terrible school shootings happened and people immediately want to go and take people's guns. And the reason they passed this law at the state level to stop the overreach of politicians is simply because it's starting to happen in more and more communities. You know, what happens if we had a shooting here in, in Jamaica Beach? Next thing you guys decide, we're gonna outlaw guns. That's another constitutional right we have in the state, in this country. And the fact that you shoot. Alright, well, thank you. Uh, we are establishing an STRO Association and this is awesome.
Uh, Mr. Grant Hill? Oh, Mr. Grant Hill.
Don't remember my name.
Uh, Grant Hill, one six seven eight, Pobeso, Del Paso. Thank you, Council, for bearing me out, and Mayor. I would like to first, like, off the screen, to talk about, uh, I support what Jake said about raising the sales tax, like, that's kind of a no-brainer. Uh, secondarily, around the STR stuff, like, uh, I support what the city's doing and I really want to thank Council for all the work you do and volunteering. Like, everybody who's here, we've got a big audience, we need to recognize it. Y'all are all volunteered. And also want to thank the city staff for all the work that goes into everything for this. So thank y'all for the work doing this. I think all the ordinances are completely reasonable. I used to rent my house. I don't anymore. Um, I did register to get a number just in case, you know, I may want to rent it in the future. But like, that's okay. And so like, I don't feel like the city's like, impinging on my rights as a property owner, right? Um, I don't think there's, you know, I'll, I'll have to cancel a rental for like a school shooting convention, uh, but that's okay. You know, it's, it's my right as a property owner. And I think that like, if you wonder about the root cause of like where this is coming from, there's a disconnect between like, people that like the community and want to live down here and spend time down here versus investment in real estate investment. And so I support the city in like putting some guardrails up for rentals just because, you know, if, if the asset class changes that everybody rented into, like, you know, that's real estate, like markets change. So that's how it goes. Thank you for the time. I appreciate it. Please, um, I do support the ordinance and I think the trash ordinance is also a good one, too. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Jerry Jackson?
Council, Mayor. Jerry Jackson, one six six one two, Curly. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank, like, which last gentleman said, the council, what they're doing and the problems and the difficulty from everyone else. But y'all have been doing a great job and I strongly support what is going on right now with the STR regulations. Reason I mainly want to talk is that I don't think we have an inspector to inspect construction that's underway. And it kind of disappoints me that we haven't gone through an intro of some type of inspection either with a police officer or a volunteer or someone, you know, volunteering, like, I don't know. But it, it disturbs me that we are allowing new construction remodeling done. They might have a permit, but we're not inspecting that the permits are being followed. And that's what I'm concerned with. And one thing I will say is that the house that I'm in, I tell my kiddos that I'm spending your retirement money.
Thank you, Jerry. I think a lot of us are doing that.
Well, you know.
Ms. Kelly Billyott?
I gotta do the rum.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm not as well-spoken as them, so I'm gonna have to read. My name is Kelly Billyott. I'm at four two two five Jolly Roger Road. And my family has owned property here in Jamaica Beach since nineteen seventy-four, before we even incorporated. I was raised here since I was eight years old. I love it here. Um, things have definitely changed here since I was a child, some for the better and some not. I recognize that time brings change, but some of the things that I miss the most are the sense of security, the peaceful neighborhood, and the family spirit that we once had here. Some of our former full-time residents have left the neighborhood as a result of the increased number of STRs, while others have left the area for other reasons. Everything wrong here in our precious city is not the fault of STRs. However, it is factual that STRs are a contributing factor to many of the full-timers' complaints, like parking, noise, and trash. I'm confident that almost every STR owner would defensively say, "Not my renters," or "I've never had the police called on my rental," et cetera. That's great, thank you. But why the defensiveness unless you actually recognize that these things are indeed issues in our neighborhood? Why only fight for one side of this argument rather than what's best for your neighbors and our neighborhood? Is it because this change may impact your income stream? If so, then maybe you need to reevaluate your motivation. There's an old adage that says that you don't mix money and family. As an STR owner, if your primary motivation is money, then I don't think you can fairly consider the family or your neighbors that you're impacting. One of our neighbors on Facebook mentioned that the cap proposal itself is not the only problem, but rather that there's not an alternate, alternative option. And he's also right when he says that emotions are high and do something now. STR owners don't want their rights impacted as it pertains to how they handle their properties and their potential to continue to profit from businesses that they're running here. Full-timers are distraught over STRs and are adamant that something needs to get done to reduce the impact these transient renters have on our own rights and for use of enjoyment of our own properties, which are our homes. Not much gets a debate going better than the topics of money and rights. And this battle between STRs and full-timers is certainly raging. Personally, I'd like to see this battle get resolved. I'd like to see the neighborhood return to the beautiful slice of paradise that it once was, where our neighbors are friends, with neighbors that look out for each other, well, with actual neighbors. I don't think that we've spent enough time to be at the point for a decision like this ordinance proposes. I think a town hall meeting or some other forum might be beneficial to present and debate ideas for a solution to all of our concerns regarding STRs. Not to debate whether STRs are good or bad, but merely listen to each other's ideas and come to a solution together. Let's try listening to each other's perspectives and goals and any potential solutions.
Time.
Damn.
Ms. Ginger Jones?
Very nice.
We moved here and I was, uh, and it was really a great place. We had neighbors that we knew. We all got together from time to time, had, in our little groups and fell aside and stuff like that. But over the time, they have ended up either dying, which is often the say, or moving away. And it's just not the same as it used to be. It's just, we have one family besides ourselves and our whole block. It's just we have one family besides ourselves on our whole block that are full-time. And we miss having the neighbors and the community feeling that we've had in the past. So, I have them all for not telling these that have them, you can't have them anymore, but restricting the number and not have to keep adding to that number. And also on the trash issue, I can't see having 200 pounds of trash in one week as one home stays ahead. Maybe give a warning to them the first time, but we have got to get some control like we have tried doing with the trash. And I appreciate it, I'm sending y'all to you. Thank you.
Either Mr. Paul or Ms. Patricia Salvo.
Hi, I'm Patricia Salvo, we live at 16610 Jamaica Beach Road. And we're kind of a combination between it's a family vacation home and a short-term rental. So, we're semi-retired, we bought it so that we can actually, you know, have money to fund short-term rentals to kind of help pay them off and then we actually truly retire. So, we love Jamaica Beach, absolutely love the community. We are good at short-term rentals, we manage our own properties, we have two in Seattle as well, so three in Dallas. And we, our concern is just value of the property. So, we feel like if you're putting all these regulations in, we feel like it's really focused on the bad short-term rentals and not really helping the good short-term rentals. And so, you know, when we're out here and we're vacationing with our family, you know, we see people that are, you know, the bad short-term rentals. And so, we understand, but we'd like to see the city focus on those and give them, you know, the letter, whatever you need to do to enforce those rules. We feel like the focus has been more on make, you know, kind of really coming down regulation law, divisionally perhaps. We're wondering if to prolong it and let our kids inherit it and our grandkids, we put it in an LLC so that that's an entity that continues into the future and, you know, there's our certificate. You know, there are things that we have to, you know, try to do to prevent that. And then if we sell it, we have to sell the LLC, then the home that's with it, the certificate goes with it. Those are some things we've been talking about. It would definitely hurt us at a short-term rental if we sold the property and had to cancel all our future bookings. There'd be a lot of penalties with the websites out there and we could be in the plans, we already got it. We're concerned about the cap on short-term rentals because we're thinking that if it's what happened now and then we have more people come in, does that create more people doing it without a certificate? And not following regulations, that's going to cause people to go underground, so, you know, doing it on its own. The division, just here, the division lies neighbors, short-term versus not short-term. You know, we join this community because we felt the family, we felt the friendliness and everybody that I've talked to in the city has been one of the much less. And we've had all the common inspected, we've done all that, and we want any changes. One question concerns us, the frequent buyer penalty now, and we have more of them, we are allowed to occupancy-wise? Are we restricted at our own home? Let's say, hey, do you mind?
Next is Mrs. Diana Sharon.
Sharon.
I think you said before, I always. Is it Sharon or Sharon?
Sharon.
Sharon, that's what I thought.
Hi, I'm Diana Sharon at 1657 Trinidad Way. I'm a full-time resident, been full-time for the last 10 years. We've owned our property here for 17 years. Obviously, I'm here, I'm happy to keep, have a limit on the number of SDRs. Because, I mean, here's the thing, I spent the last couple of days reading, listening, you know, on VRVO and Airbnb. Everybody wants to promote their property as this safe community and family-friendly and all that. But what happens when it's 50, 60, 70% SDRs? It's not the same community, you know, it's not the same safe community. I mean, I'm already surrounded by strangers all the time. And the other thing too is that, like, someone else has said, everybody thinks that their SDR, oh, we don't have any problems, we never had to call the police. Without your full-time neighbors, there's a lot of things that happen that we don't call the police on. We go over there and we talk to people and say, hey, you know, don't put a fire under the house. Don't go diving into this canal that's got garbage all in it. It's things like that, you know, I mean, we don't call the police, but now in the past couple of days or past couple of weeks, we've had to call the fire department once, the police once. I mean, you know, everybody thinks they're defined just because they didn't hear, but we're talking about absentee owners here. You don't know what goes on there. And without your full-time neighbors, actual kind of unofficial hall monitors or whatever you want to call us, you don't know what goes on there. And I'm not saying that these renters are bad people because they're not. We've had to go over and talk to several of them, they are nice people, but they leave their common sense at the causeway when they come over here. I mean, you wouldn't believe some of this. I mean, we had to go over there one day, they had, please, SDR owners, stop with the fire pits. I mean, these are getting ridiculous. We had twice had to call the fire department out of the one across from us because first they started burning treated lumber in it, which filled all of our houses up with smoke that was toxic. Then they left the fire pit burning in 30 mile an hour winds and went out to dinner. You know, embers flying everywhere, you know, I mean, it's that kind of thing. Like I said, common sense left at the causeway. So, as far as like, people say, oh, I can't rent my house, what happened to full-time renters? What happened to snowbirds? What happened to, you know, all of this? They can still rent your house. I mean, and it might be better for the island, the community, everybody, you know, in general. But this, you know, thing, I, like I said, everybody thinks it, it really comes down to is it a property values issue or is it a community values issue? And that's really all about it. Thanks, thank you, Diana.
Ms. Monica Allen.
Monica Allen, 16622 Jamaica Beach Road. And I'm glad to know that I am not the only black sheep that has shown up today, I am an SDR owner. I had a nice little thing all written out, but I don't want to bore you all with a lot of things that have already been said. I will say, we came to the island in 2013 for a visit, fell in love. In 2016, my husband decided he wanted someplace that our landlocked children and grandchildren could come, visit us and see the beach and the gulf, something that they had never done before. So, we bought 16622 Jamaica Beach Road. At that time, in 2016, that particular house had been a vacation rental for over 15 years. I have a family currently that comes every summer since her son was born. Her son celebrated his 20th birthday last summer. With the limits of occupancy, with the moratorium that you are considering today, this has affected a lot of our return guests, guests that come back year after year after year because they have developed memories, memories that their generation upon generations can talk about. Regarding the moratorium, I bought the house on Jamaica Beach Road as an investment. I use it for my personal, my grandkids come down with their parents, we have other extended family that come down and use it as well. However, I will be completely honest, it's an investment. It was meant to be sold when we decided to retire, using solely the equity that was built in this house. I don't get much of a revenue stream, and for those that are asking why there are not more full-timers, it's property taxes and insurance. I spend $18,000 a year on property insurance, or property taxes and insurance for that one house. Full-timers, especially retirees, can't afford that. We rent out because we want to keep our properties, we want to be able to come down without having to pay exorbitant rates to VRVO or Airbnb and be able to enjoy our own properties. But I sure as heck can't afford that, along with the utilities and everything else. So, that being said, I will leave it with you all with something that my 90-year-old mother sends. One bad apple does not spoil the bunch. Thank you.
Dr. Heather Stevenson.
Good evening, how are you? I just want to say thank you all so much for your efforts and volunteers. I'm actually on the opposite end of the week, so I know it's a lot of work, volunteer work that goes into it. So, I actually moved, I've been a full-time resident in Jamaica Beach since I started medical school at UTMB in 2002. But I live on the same, it's Act Street, so I've seen what's going on over the years. I decided to raise my children here, I have a nine-year-old and an 11-year-old son. And I have a revolving door pretty much all around me now, all over where my street is. And I just, I've never complained this entire time I've lived in Jamaica Beach, by the way. This is my first time speaking at one of these meetings, so it really is something very important to me. I looked all over the island where I raise my kids, and we have a couple houses that are really small, 900,000 square feet, very frequently. All three SDRs around me have had 12 to 14 cars rocking our street where you have to zigzag to get home from work on our street. My kids, I had to have a birds and the bees conversation with my kids because they were in our pool and saw some naked people on the deck next door. So, I've had, it's been pretty crazy. And so, I just, I don't, I know we do have to have some SDRs, I get that. But I want to have a little bit more of our community feel back and our family feel back to this community. It's gotten out of hand, I have a lot of friends that live in all over the island, pirates, Spanish grant, they have way stricter limits than you guys are composing, way stricter. Matter of fact, some don't allow it at all. So, I think what you're doing is right, I support it 100%, a lot of other people in the community that aren't here tonight support it. So, thank you all very much, we appreciate it. Again, I did not build this, our new house in 2016 for it to be like a Motel 6. There are strangers on my street every, you know, every five or six days a new family comes in, it's just too much, guys, it really is. So, thank you for your efforts, we really appreciate it. Jamaica Cove Road. Thank you.
Mr. Aaron Minnick.
Good evening, here in Green, 16506 Trinidad Way. I've been a resident of Jamaica Beach for about seven years with my wife Gina. First of all, I want to say thank God that legislators are always right, yeah, you know? And also, you know, the Constitution has amendments. Things fluctuate, things move, so if you don't like them, you can change them. I do support the proposal for the new ordinance of suspension of new licenses, or whatever did you refer to them, for short-term rentals. I've got a few vehicles, but I wanted to tell you, you know, yesterday I bought a $300,000 Lamborghini, thank you very much. $300,000 I paid for a Lamborghini yesterday. I always wanted one, I knew I couldn't afford one, but I thought, what the hell, I'm going to do it anyways, Gina's pissed. I feel that I deserve it, nobody can tell me that I shouldn't be able to have a Lamborghini. So, since I can't afford it, I looked around and I said, oh, well, you know, Lyft, Uber, you can actually turn your vehicle into a profitable income. So, I thought, ah, this is great, this is one way to dissuade and kind of supplement my income by using this Lamborghini that I can't afford. So, sure, it only has two seats, but what the hell, that's what laps are for. It has a trunk, you can probably throw a couple of people in there, yeah, more people, more income, what the hell? Screw the rules. What's the traffic safety board say about it? Who cares? We don't need safety belts. I want to drive 150 miles an hour and, you know, to hell with everybody else. I don't deserve a Lamborghini, I don't have a Lamborghini, I would sell that sucker tomorrow because I can't afford it. The city is not responsible for guaranteeing investments, right? Otherwise, I'm going to come to you and ask for my money back from Enron. So, the suspension is not a ban, we're not saying that we're going to take away your license, right? If you institute this ordinance. Who decided that Jamaica Beach should be a hotel? The charter was for single-family homes, it wasn't for come-one, come-all and spend your money to spend short periods of time here. I live next to a circus right now. So, where is my rights? Where are these people going to support me when I try to sell my home and they see this BS next door? You know, half-naked people, people partying, loud noise, I mean, it's a beautiful home, though it could be wrong. But, yeah, it's going to devalue my house as well. So, are you going to support me and supplement my income? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Good day.
Ms. Kim Gilligan.
Hi, Kim Gilligan, 4818 Jamaica Cove. So, I can appreciate everyone's viewpoint here, we're all out for ourselves, right? So, we're all looking out for our best interests, we all have different interests. So, in my situation, I purchased my lot on Jamaica Cove in 2020 and I paid a whole lot for it. And when I was looking for lots and where I was going to build my home, I looked at a lot of different places. The primary thing on my list was being able to be in an area where I could short-term rent. If I wanted to not be able to do that, I would not have purchased here, I would have purchased in Sunset Cove or what, you know, other areas where I could not do that. And so, purchased the lot, long process, finally got the house built, just moved in early November. You know, I am so happy for those of you that can live here full-time and you're retired. I unfortunately am not at that point yet. Therefore, I designed a home that would be good for my family as well as being able to short-term rent it to families. I, you know, it's a high-end home, so I can get a high-end price, so hopefully we won't have riffraff. I don't want anyone tearing up my home either. I plan to use the home myself quite a bit and supplement with a short-term rental. So, I am honestly distraught that I have put three years into this whole idea of what this was going to be for me, you know, buying the lot, doing the plans, building the home, which was a horrific, you know, you know, trial. And then finally to get to this point and be told that you guys are now considering taking that opportunity away from me. I mean, I, his only thing about the Lamborghini, cute, but you know what? If he wanted to Uber it, he could. You're about to potentially take the mind right away from me to be able to even afford this house. You know, I don't live here full-time, I have a business in Cyprus that I have to work. You know, if I had known that this was going to happen, I would never have bought that lot and built the house in Jamaica Beach. And I love Jamaica Beach and I'm so happy to be here for the short amount of time I happen, but this is extremely disheartening to even have to be here tonight to be talking about this. But at the same time, I say that, I understand everyone else and I would be super upset if I was next to someone with naked people too. So, I really do get it all and I just hope and pray that there's some sort of solution for everyone. And so, so that's it. I just, I hope that, you know, that this does not go forward or that there's some sort of rules and regulations that will allow maybe those of us that already have our houses built or bought the lot or whatever, because this could be a huge situation for me.
Mr. Del Hubert.
Madam Mayor, you hear it every day. I apologize.
Name it after him.
Del Hubert, 6772, San Piper Road. I'd like to congratulate y'all for passing an SDR ordinance in the first place. Congratulations. Secondly, your occupation ordinance, again, it's not enforceable. Sometimes the city has to do things to protect the city. The two plus two would have been a much better choice. Thank you, Woody. Do y'all understand that sometimes ordinance is a pass to protect the city? Not just the, it's not even going to be penalizing anybody. And all these SDR people are threatening lawsuits. I highly encourage you, please, go file a lawsuit, let's get to the bottom of it. Because what's going to happen is, we're going to find out, is the battle cry going to be single-family resident or is it going to be commercial business? Sorry, Woody.
Sorry, I just.
I get it. But that's the deal, threatening lawsuits and. I get it. But that's, that's the deal. Threatening lawsuits and doing all that is crazy, but whenever you start naming my wife in a lawsuit, I take it personal. I take it serious, and I take it personal. And I expect counsel, get on board, or get off the chair. Move. Do something. Let somebody get in there that's gonna handle this. We gotta get something done. Nobody's, we're just limiting SDRs right now. That's all we can do. We can't ban them. All these people, you gotta understand, you have no rights. You haven't been penalized at all for anything. You have no suit. There's no damages. There's no damages for them. Nobody's been penalized at all for anything. Maybe the trash guy got a ticket, but he deserved it. So whenever y'all start worrying about, just conform to what we're trying to do here, make it a better place to live. And we got way too many SDRs. So please, don't issue any more permits. Stop issuing permits.
All right, SDR, you ready to hear some folks online? Andrew Kane? Is he on? No? Okay. Marina Wright? Ms. Wright?
Ms. Wright, you can unmute yourself. Ms. Wright?
Okay. Jeff Wright?
He spoke already.
Oh, okay. Larry Binsall?
Yes.
Ms. Binsall, you can unmute yourself? Is Mr. Binsall trying to get in? No? Okay. Zach Strickland?
It's, oh, that's one of those, one of those, it doesn't work.
Ms. Strickland, you can unmute yourself?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, they just let me in, they probably want to unmute. Okay, so this is Zach Strickland at sixteen-five-six-four Pelican Road. I hope everyone had a great holiday. I'm here to talk about SDR cap. And I must say, I was a bit surprised that less than a month ago, we were still making amendments to the law maker SDR ordinance. And here we are again today, talking about taking away ninety percent of the community's rights to rent their property. Currently, Jamaica Beach has twenty-one percent of the community renting their property, and it's gonna take many, many years to get down to the ten percent rate that's being proposed. I think it also raises many issues for our families that would inherit our property and losing their rights and void of property in ways that they so desire. I'm very much opposed to this SDR cap, but if it does pass, I think the more reasonable percentage of the community should have the right to maintain their rights. I think twenty-five percent seems to be a more fair number. I think you're gonna find that SDR owners and full-time residents will both be opposed to this. Like Missy previously mentioned, you never know if or when you're gonna need to rent your properties, and if that right is taken away by the government, it's gonna hurt. I heard an argument earlier about trash, noise, parking issues that are all caused by SDRs, and all of those topics have already been addressed with general and specific ordinances. Putting a cap limit on SDRs is not the solution. And another thing, if you wanna drive your Rambo at a hundred and fifty miles per hour, you're liable to get a speeding ticket and put in jail for violating laws that are already put in place. No city should or would step in and tell everyone else that they can't buy that Rambo or Uber their car because of your stupidity. And lastly, I'm an engineer, not a lawyer, but I did see a law firm send a letter raising many concerns about the overall legality. Why is the city trying to pass something that's already been proven unlawful by the California court? That's all I've got, and please don't pass the SDR cap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. Ms. Betty Montgomery? Jerry Montgomery? All right. Diana Barker?
Ms. Barker, you can unmute yourself? Ms. Barker?
Hi, Diana Barker, one-six-nine-one-four Beach Center. And I one-hundred percent agree with everything you guys said in front of me. I am opposed to any kind of percentage cap on SDRs. I am personally a, I do not rent my house out, but I have for fifteen years prior to this, prior to COVID, COVID when I turned off the market. We've had one to two SDRs. We're the good SDRs. I know everybody in there would love to hear that. And we are very concerned if for some reason that we actually have to rent it out again due to medical issues, or due to inheritance, or due to passing of the property, that we would not be able to do that. And I don't think that's fair for somebody to buy there and been there for basically half my life to be able, you know, to not have that option. The other thing is that, has anybody done a study on if the SDRs go down to ten percent, what the revenue loss would be to the city? Because I think that's a major loss. I've paid lots and lots of taxes to that city over the ten years that I rented out property. Uh, what else do I have? I think that's pretty much it. I want, I want to make sure that it can be inherited. I want to make sure that we are not capping a percentage of SDRs. And, you know, I don't want to rent my house out. I'm not planning on it. You know, I'm definitely on the side of the owners that live there, but it is a family house. We actually have two down there, one on Bay Side, one on, one on each side, and we go there all the time. And this is just something that, something that is fair for y'all to implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Next is, um, Amy Torres? Uh, Jeffrey Biffler?
Uh, he posted on Facebook, he's in person.
Oh, okay. Um...
I'm here.
Hi, Jeffrey.
Hello, how are you? Early, I was listening out there because we can't really hear. So Jeff either, uh, six, one-six-six-one-two, Longer Way. I have some points I'd like to make in regard to this, but more importantly, we've heard everybody's kind of, this is a hot topic, but across the country, right, SDR. So everybody's got opinions and things of that nature, and I've heard a lot of that tonight. But what I haven't heard, and what I haven't seen, are statistics. You know, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm unprepared. Three days' notice is not enough. And I came for the last three meetings and I sat and listened, because I just want to hear, I want to be a part of the community, I want to know what's going on. If you really have anything to say, and quite honestly, I don't even know how this impacts me, right? I am, I was introduced to the community in twenty-eighteen by a friend of mine who, who is here tonight, who drove two hours down and two hours back because the call-in is, is not the best system. But, you know, there's many people sitting out here, we can't even hear. So the best thing that I've heard tonight is, we shouldn't make any move tonight. We should have a town hall, we should let the community get involved. And quite honestly, the SDR...
Participants are waiting in the lobby.
There's a lot that goes on with the SDR. But the nuisance, I mean, that's, that's what I kind of gathered out of the last three meetings was the nuisance. And we did start SDR at the end of last year, the end of this, this year, summer, rather, August, or in twenty-four. I've had like three, and part-time, you know, times are tough for me right now, so I, I'm like, I knew this was coming. Three years in, you know, we're here every weekend, and we would come to this point. The point is, is that I think as, as a, as a council, as a community, we need to get stats, statistics. How does it impact us economically? How's it gonna impact the prices of the homes? How's, what's the tax revenue? What's gonna go down with the people who aren't homesteading? You know, they don't get those caps, the tax rate, somebody spoke to that. So I'm open for an open dialogue. I want to be an active part of the community. Most of the people that are here that I've heard from that are SDRs, they want to be open members of the community. Absolutely, they're violators. And quite honestly, I'm gonna raise my hand. One time I had both my neighbors over, we got a little loud, my boat was over the water, had my boat radio on, Jamaica Beach Police came by, said, it's getting late. I turned my music off, they've never been back to my house again. Sometimes we need reminders. Mr. Rushell, the alderman here, a couple meetings ago, said, hey, I think we got this wrong. We gotta enforce what we have. And so instead of making new ordinances, let's enforce the ordinance we have, just like I was violating the noise ordinance one time in thirty years by mistake, you know, with my neighbors. Sometimes people need a, a friendly reminder. And I get that it's out of control, and there's some crazy party houses, and the overbooking and all of that. But as far as the ten percent, I think it's huge, and I think litigation could come. Let's not spend the tax mayor's money on litigation. We can get together and...
Thank you.
Mr. Braun? Hello? Sorry, we don't, no, we didn't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, sorry.
Hi, Darren Braun, four-four-zero-one Pelican Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the SDR cap, of course. So I don't think that the responsible SDR operators of the city would have any issue with carefully considered, collaboratively drafted regulations that are reasonable and which carefully balance the rights of all property owners of the city. And it would be so simple for the city to appoint a mixed committee of full-time residents, part-time residents, SDR operators to work together to examine the situation holistically, and report back to the council a plan for tackling the issues facing the city. But unfortunately, for whatever reason, the city keeps legislating from a hip, blindly passing flag-considered-to-be-vary poorly worded ordinances that are duplicative of other ordinances, and then stray really far beyond whether it's legal or constitutional. I would strongly urge the city to stop, think, and carefully consider arguments in the demand letters that have been sent out, and at, by the Hendrick C. and any other law firms. With all due respect, a lot of the comments I heard today from lay residents are frankly uninformed. Pirates Cove can ban or limit short-term rentals because it's an HOA, not a government's energy. You worry yourself, the lawsuits are coming. It's patently absurd for people to invite and beg those lawsuits to come on, because that is exactly what the city does not need. It simply divides common sense to the city that ran through on such fortuitous ordinances that have such a profound impact on everyone, and are just legally infirm. I worry the city's not receiving good legal advice, or it's just outright ignoring that legal advice. I recall there being outrage because the city had to spend twenty thousand dollars in legal fees to conduct a rather pointless investigation into the former police chief's allegations of harassment. Imagine the outrage when the city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend ordinances that competent attorneys could tell you were dead on arrival? Can we imagine the outrage when on top of that, the city has to pay attorney's fees and court costs to the prevailing property owners? I strongly urge the council to collaboratively work with everybody in the community and share any consideration of the cap for the time being.
Thank you, Mr. Braun.
Let's get a lawyer to talk.
You got Andy this morning?
Ms. Wright, you can unmute yourself? Is it for me? Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, we'll say it's really hard to hear you call people's names. So I appreciate you giving me the chance to talk remotely. Andrea Sperry, one-six-six-one-seven Jamaica Beach Road. I am the one person that has phoned into every meeting except two since you allowed phone-in meetings. So again, I really do appreciate this. Respect to the SDR-proposed moratorium, this has become a neighbor versus neighbor topic. As many have stated, all SDRs are being blamed for the actions of abuse. Let's stop this and figure out how to be a community again. We've had a house for five years on beach side. We're the stepchildren of it. Beachside homes have been rental homes for at least the twenty-five years I rented homes before I bought. What we need to do is use our existing ordinances on noise, trash, and parking, solve the issues we have. According to the police report, no issues are present. At least with these current police reports, it just shows things happening on thirty-odd spots. Nothing happening really within the community except possibly a slow domestic disturbance. Show citizens the research and data, the force of voices that are driving moratoriums and limits on SDR. We are not all bad. I use my house half the time, maybe even more. But I don't, don't see any data that says SDR next to me that police twenty-two is a problem. I've called the police on them a couple of times, but that doesn't show up anywhere. Data must exist somewhere, drive this hot-button issue, so that we can hear how we get along again. Show us the data. The other thing I'd like to quickly mention has to do with building reflection, and again, on beach side, and I want to know why all the walkovers are clustered on one end of Jamaica Beach Road. I know for a fact that several of these walkover processes were made years ago by homeowners, and that homeowners have maintained them. There are walkovers at different points in the beach side. Divided walkovers should be spread.
Participants are waiting in the lobby. To admit all participants in the lobby, press star, two, one.
Again, what I would support is, as has been said before, town hall meetings, let's not rush things. Let's find and calm down some tensions, show us some data. We don't have the data, let's start collecting the data. Because we all need to figure out how to make Jamaica Beach the best village it can be. She needs that one back in the bottle. We all want Jamaica Beach to be a place to live. Let's figure out together how to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, that concludes citizen comments. Okay, on to announcements. Next Saturday night, January twentieth, there's a Boots and Blade fundraiser for a new boat for the police department. So tickets, the information's online, you can go to our Facebook page and, and participate and help, help this great organization raise some funds for our community. Also, it's not on the announcements, but on Wednesday, next January seventeenth, Wayless Grill once again is sponsoring pie in the face. So citizens provided toys for kids, and the biggest, you know, they, they put a bigger box for me, and it filled up. So most toys get the pie in the face, and Jacob Strube, much to his chagrin, got lined up with me. So he and I are receiving pies in the face. And I made the horrible mistake of telling Cindy I don't like liver, so she's concocting a liver pie. And retroactively, I realized I should have told her I hated chocolate. Okay, on to reports from directors. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new city administrator, Ms. Kendall Francis. He is awesome. He's absolutely terrific. I, I hope all of y'all get to come by and shake his hand, or at least say hi to him when he's out walking his two fabulous dogs. So, for his first city administrator report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, one other thing that we missed on the announcements is Monday is Martin Luther King Junior Day, so the, pardon me, so the city will be closed in observance of, of that day. Also, our trash pickup, it's a holiday, but Mayor Waste will collect as normal on... Also, our trash pickup, it's a holiday, but mayor waste will collect as normal on Monday, so you can be prepared in that regard. Something else I wanna make certain that our citizens are aware of, oh, thank you, Esther. So we did not, we were not able to finalize water bills in a timely manner. But we wanna make certain that we're not penalizing citizens. So we are extending the customer's late payment date through the end of January, so to January thirty-first. Any payments made in February for a January bill will be assessed a late charge. But it was our error in getting bills out late, so we've extended that time to the end of the month. A big thank you to everyone who participated in the polar plunge last week. That was my first polar plunge and it was a tremendous success. I was shocked to see that many people were that crazy, so. We raised over eighteen thousand dollars for Texas Special Olympics, so that's just awesome. Quickly, some updates on our projects that we have going on. The Bayside Lift Station, which was something that has been hanging out there for a while. It is fully operational now, so that, that's one thing that we've got crossed off the list. The water project, which has been ongoing and we thank you for your patience. Contractors, yesterday they made the last major connection. I was told by their foreman today that all of the main lines should be installed in the ground by the end of tomorrow, barring any just catastrophic thing. So you'll start seeing a lot of the heavy equipment leaving. But there is still, we have sixty-day construction window before substantial completion. But any future disruptions should be minimal, very short-lived, so that's great news. Now, I'm from Kansas, so I'm used to cold weather, but you guys are not. So Monday, their forecast is calling for some freezing temperatures, so we're just asking people to be mindful of that with your homes. Encourage you to leave faucets dripping, open the under sink cabinets so that you make sure that heat can get into that. I will make you aware that city staff or our contractors will not be shutting off water preemptively. Obviously, if a break is detected, we will be happy to shut them off. But there is a charge that is assessed with that, and because it's a holiday, that charge is three hundred dollars. So please be mindful of your properties and make sure that they're winterized. And also, citizens are not to be accessing their meter pits for the shut-off. Your shut-off should be at your home and so, again, that's just something to be mindful of. And then on a little bit more of a personal note, the last thing I have. So some of the recent ordinance changes, you know, obviously we can see they're forcing us to enforce some things that people disagree with and they're becoming emotional. And personally, I understand frustrations, but I would ask you to remember that my staff is just the messenger. You know, they're doing their job. And so when it comes to dealing with staff, we just ask that you would be civilized in those discussions. We've encountered some yelling and cussing and things that, quite frankly, just aren't acceptable. And I've instructed them that if people are being uncivil, negligent, that they're to tell them that they're not able to deal with them at this time and they could call back when they're more civilized. And so if you encounter something like that, please know that that's my command to them. And I've told them that they can hang up on you, that they deserve to be treated with respect and I would just appreciate that. So, thank you.
Chief, are you out there?
Yes. Y'all got my report? Thank y'all for the polar plunge, for coming out for that. I just wanted to elaborate on something about the lady making the comments that we don't list the calls at the SDRs. Mayor, since day one, has asked me to keep a log of every call at every SDR to see if we have repeat offenders, and she has that. I don't post everything on there, because if you do that and Jolly and Jean over here are fighting, then I'm gonna put on there that you and your husband are fighting. That's not people's business, okay? So understand, when I do these things, I do them fairly. But make no mistake about it, we do have a running list of every SDR call that we get. She knows about it and we turn it over to Bailey. Bailey keeps a list of them, she's in charge of the SDRs. It is being done, folks. I just don't put it out for everything. If it says on my report, it says significant events. That's what I put on there. But if we start listing everything, okay, then we're gonna do that. When we put, you know, you and your husband are having a fight, everybody's gonna know y'all are fighting. That's not what we're here to do, folks. So the mayor and I sat down and we have a certain way of doing it. It's being kept, I promise you. The log is there, the lady has a log, feel free to call me. I'll look, I'll give you anything you want. We are keeping those logs. We are all on the same team. Like I said, we're here to work together to find the right solution for everybody. And I promise you, it is being kept up, okay? I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Yes, we submitted a draft contingency plan to TCHQ in December. It was accepted and approved and we're gonna have some follow-up work. But I did my report, I have March the first, we're supposed to submit other stuff, but I understand now it's October. So it's been moved back a little bit. We have utilized TIPS finally of council for doing crossovers. It was a very nice tool to use, which you all passed last fall. We had several inquiries and when, once we posted, it automatically generated a report that the request for proposals went out to ninety-eight contractors in Houston area. So it was well put out there. We had several inquiries, but we only received one bid. I'm waiting right now, I talked to the people from TIDAM today because when this was approved back in, we received the money in two thousand and nine. This is at Post Eye, the Dune Crossovers that was supposed to have been built in. It was a hundred and four thousand dollars. We can't build five crossovers with the materials today. So I requested that we lower the number down to three crossovers. And one of the calls mentioned that why they were only on one side. Well, these are the coordinates that FEMA gave TIDAM to give to me to where to build them. It wasn't like I went out and picked them. City Administrator and I went out there with TIDAM in December and we marked them all out. So it was not like we went and walled one place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no fire chief report today. All right, next is consent agenda. So we have three items to consider in our table. The minutes from the special city council meeting when we interviewed city administrator candidates, approval for minutes from the regular city council meeting on December fourteenth, and then our routine annual requirement to designate Galveston Daily News as Jamaica Beach's official newspaper. If there's a special request to discuss, we can. Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second, I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, did you get your numbers?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is comments, reports for members of council. Mr. Pass?
Thank you, Mayor. I recently reported to Susan Wells, the founder of our Stars for Truths, and our volunteers and I shared nearly sixty-five hundred stars with our military. Tonight, when I came in and someone was wearing a very Vietnam hat and I ran out to the hallway, didn't have one in my pocket. Ran out to the hallway and made sure that he and your two children you were serving too. So it means a whole lot to us to be able to give you those stars and we're thankful for your family service. I wanna thank everyone for donating their made in USA flags to us. They need that and when they need to be retired, remind you that you can drop them off with me, City Hall or Jamaica Beach Hardware. Special thanking Lisa Carson and Ginger Jones, Jerry Jackson, and many others for helping to assemble and package the stars. Vernon Anderson transports stars and stripes and takes them to BMW so they're still retired properly. And then all of my helpers to carry them around in their purse and their pockets and share them when they're out on cruises, when they're out on flights. And I had one wonderful story to where a couple explained what we were doing over Veterans Day to apply the attendant. And the flight attendant made an announcement and they were able to give out twenty-two stars in that flight to service members and service responders. So our little city is having a huge impact, I think, in our work. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report.
All right, all the good health.
I'm gonna go back to one of the comments that I harped on during the previous mayor and I'm gonna harp on it now. We need town halls and we need them urgently. We have several issues that need to be brought up, not just short-term rentals, but beach usage fees and alcohol on the beach. We need to come to some sort of consensus on all of these as a community. And, you know, shouting at each other on Facebook is not a solution. We need to, we need to figure out what's going on and it needs to be in an open forum where ideas are discussed amongst like-minded folks and with a respectful view of both sides of the story. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Actually, next on the agenda is the city administrators' report. We'll cross-reference that next time. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think that did it.
All right. Okay, next we're on to new business. First is discussion consideration and take action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two, which is the ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas repealing all previous minor curfew ordinances. So basically, the Texas House passed a bill, eighteen nineteen, and it actually bans us from having our own ordinance. So this is to keep us in line with our state legislature. So do I have a motion to discuss? No?
I'll have a motion to vote.
Okay, do I have a second to vote?
I have a second, then.
Okay, all in favor of repealing the previous minor curfew ordinances? Is there any conflict? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Under protest. Talking about mandates.
Okay, next is discussion consideration and take action to approve contract for construction of Dune walkovers. As Mr. King Taro talked about, would you like to reiterate?
Yes, because we don't have the permission from FEMA as of yet, I would ask the council to table till I get the confirmation from FEMA on whether it will allow us to go from three to five, three crossovers.
Yeah, and we're also gonna further pursue, is FEMA absolutely requiring us to put them in the old locations? Because with title movement and Dune movement, those locations might not be as optimum today as they were at the time of ICA. So anyway, we're gonna table this. Okay, all in favor, taking until next meeting?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, next is discussion and consideration concerning increasing the city's general sales tax one percent. This will be a vote to put it on the May election. Raising taxes at this amount does require it to go on the ballot. Do I have a motion to discuss?
One more second.
And, well, and actually, we're not voting on it this time to go. We will have the exact language together. So at this point, the discussion.
Motion to discuss.
Oh, yeah, a motion to discuss. Can we get a second? All right, so as Jake pointed out earlier, by law, the state raises six point two five percent on sales tax. Municipalities are a large, municipalities and counties, any other tax entity is allowed to charge two percent up to a max of eight point two five percent. We currently only charge one percent. Last year, it did bring in roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue or one percent. And as Jake pointed out, I mean, I think most of you can think about how often you go to the hardware store, Circle K, The Bistro, you know, we can talk about our entities and we will all be paying one percent more when we go there. But we're probably getting a thirty to one return on that dollar we spend versus what visitors in and through our community and our three double oh five access are bringing us. So anyway, discussion on points from council?
I need my memory refreshed, Mayor Bauer. Are there restrictions on that extra one percent? I mean, I don't think we can put it all into the general fund.
That, the original thought, and you will remember when we put budget together, that I indicated the extra one percent, the previous requirement was that it could only go for specific special uses. And in our instance, that special use that we could actually have use for would be street maintenance and sidewalks. You can also use it for property tax reduction and you can use it for economic development zones. So the other two weren't strong contenders for us, but they lifted that now. They passed the new law that allows the general, the one, the full two percent of municipality can charge to go to general use. So this will be another hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we can use to fix our sewer plant, fix our lift stations, get our water lines replaced. So, or, you know, keep the AC on at City Hall.
So we're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Totally, yes, combining to the one percent we already receive. We would be looking at roughly two hundred and sixty, you know, and that's assuming the economy and the traffic on three double oh five and utilization of our businesses stays at the level it's in.
Thank you.
So basically, I'm, 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 is, I don't know how I really do this, but it sounds like we have a general approval to move forward on proposing at the next meeting the actual wording as it will go on the ballot. So.
And in your packet there is, and it's on the screen here, that's what the proposed ballot question would read, what is there in red, the sales and use tax is adopted within the city of Jamaica Beach at the rate of two percent. This would result in an increase in the local sales tax rate by one percent.
And it will appear on our May fourth general election ballot. So we will bring this forward to vote on at the next meeting. All right, thank you. On to the next topic, which is discussion and considerations concerning establishing the maximum allowable number of short-term rental units. And do I have a motion to discuss?
I make a motion that we discuss letting in the short-term rent.
Okay. Yeah, first of all, I'd like to note, this is not a vote, this is a discussion. And also, we typically, at this point, would allow additional discussion and interplay with the community. But from what I am hearing, I'd like council to discuss it and talk about some different options, but I do feel like putting a town hall together would be of benefit. So. Mayor?
I think he's got the right point. I think we could maybe bring up beach feet and alcohol on the beach and SDRs. And what, we could do three things at once at the same meeting, one part, another part? No?
Yeah, I think we stay focused on the right time. But, but in, in further discussing it, and things we can bring forward, and also, we can talk about just modifying the ordinance and then bringing it forward for discussion on a natural ordinance next time, or would we prefer to hold a town hall? The things I'm hearing that I, I think we need to address and, and figure out is transfer of STRs to heirs.
Yes.
So if you're in existing, well, first of all, I'd like to clarify. I think there is some misunderstanding that, that this is not repealing any existing STR permit. So the proposal is not to take away what you currently hold. If you have an STR permit, at the time the ordinance is passed and becomes effective, you will hold that STR permit indefinitely. And until you sell your home. I have heard concerns about it going to heirs. I think we can address that in a modified ordinance. I have also heard comments and suggestions that we consider possibly grandfathering the opportunity to rent. So let's say this ordinance passes on April first. If you own a home in Jamaica Beach on April first, you know, we'll talk about it, but, but would it be, what would be the option of grandfathering you in at that point? So if you own a home on April first, and three years from now, you get transferred overseas, and you really can't afford to keep your home here while you're paying to live overseas, if you own that home on April first, you'd be able to go get a permit. Now, if you sell your home, that's where the ban comes in. Transferring the STR to another entity, where we are trying to, to establish a maximum number of rentals in the neighborhood, so that we are still a neighborhood. Like I said, we can, we can continue the discussion at a town hall, but those are the three key things I heard that we can possibly all come together on and find a solution that keeps us a neighborhood, but protects those that live here currently or own here currently the right to rent in the future. So we can continue to have more discussions. Council is, is clearly willing to, to listen through email, through phone calls. And anyway, so I guess at this point, I'd like a, opinion by council on would you prefer to modify the ordinance and bring it up for discussion again at the next meeting, or would you prefer to conduct a town hall to, to, to lay out the framework of that ordinance?
Can I speak to that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I might prefer that we, because the points that have been brought up are very valid, and it is complex. I would prefer that we go ahead and modify our proposed modification of the ordinance so that these things are clearly stated, and we further discuss it, and then perhaps we go to the town hall. If you feel it's necessary.
Okay, so your, your proposal is we draft the ordinance with taking into account this input, bring it up for discussion again in a council meeting, and then, and then decide from that point if we should move to a town hall.
If we want it's necessary. I think, the points that you brought up.
We're just gonna throw mud against the wall, see what sticks. I think we ought to, said, we're just gonna throw mud against the wall and see what sticks. I think we ought to talk about it before we do what we've already done. Let's talk about it and get it right.
Yeah, saying, let's, let's go ahead and have a proposed, a proposed modification to ordinance that actually states, you know, clarifies these, these, these points that have been brought up.
Can I say something?
And then we talk about it. Answers, answers, and answers.
Can I say something?
Due to the.
So there's, there is a lot of people out there that are unaware of what that means.
Yeah, due to the complexity of subject, we're trying to decide how to move forward to allow optimum citizen input and, and decide how to move, move forward so that everybody can have a voice and a chance to be.
It's our time to speak.
Yes, that's right. Okay, so what I've, we need to vote on two different options. One is to schedule a town hall and discuss what an ordinance would look like, and, and then, and we would have some draft language available for discussion at that town hall.
We've got one.
We've got to.
Yeah, but we would, we would, we would incorporate some of these modifications and then have that as a decision platform, still to be modified yet, you know, generally that we're able to see.
I agree with that, and you know, that's the point is that we have, in front of the town, what we might actually vote upon. But not to vote upon until we have full citizenry.
Right, so what I'm asking for is, do I have a vote from council? Do I have a motion to vote on putting a draft ordinance together but discussing it in a special called town hall? And then the, if that is not what council wants to do, the other option is sort of the same thing, but instead of calling a town hall, we will put a draft ordinance together and, you know, once again, in the council format, council meeting format, seek input. So I need a motion to either vote on proposed ordinance discussed at town hall, or a motion for proposed ordinance and discuss at council meeting.
I think we ought to just leave it like it is, and we can discuss it further in the town hall. We don't need another draft of something we're gonna leave or not do.
Okay.
We have three options.
Actually, we have one option, and you control the agenda.
Yeah.
You don't need our vote to call a meeting or set agendas. You don't need council's vote for that. That's, that's your part, your logic, that's the main.
Okay, then we are going to draft a proposed ordinance with some of these comments incorporated, because I do feel that you get more, more concise and specific input and comments on, on words that are written rather than words that are spoken. And, and I will propose a town hall. And we will look at council's availability, and it will be on a Saturday morning, where part-time residents can attend. No, we'll probably in the dining room, in the fire station downstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, where we have room. So you'll have to dress accordingly, or, or bring your heated vest. Okay, so we have discussed item number four.
Mayor?
Yes.
Should we put up prospective dates? I mean, your initial thought was the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes, my, my initial thought was we would, we would hold the town hall on Saturday, January twenty-seventh. Okay, I will get consensus from council that they can attend, and we will send notice out via Blackboard, our, our normal communication methods, Blackboard, website, and Facebook page, Facebook page. All right, thank you. That concludes our new business for my report. I would like to say, you know, thank you for everybody being engaged and participating. It does help us be that city we all want to be. And we do appreciate all the currently registered STR owners getting in their updated applications. Bailey's working really hard to get them all done, and we have found a few smags where we have duplicate STR numbers. So apparently, we, previous, we had online systems as well as manual systems, and we apologize if there's some confusion at times, and we need clarification. Also, some of the comments brought up during the STR discussion, last year, we raised roughly six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in STR tax. This year, we lowered that projection to six hundred thousand because we recognize that we're not getting quite the number of visitors we did during COVID. Out of that, this year, our budget, I'm going on memory here, I apologize, I did not look it up again. My memory tells us we have about sixty-five thousand dollars that will go to encumbered funds, which means we can't spend that STR money on legally authorized things. The state limits us on what we can spend those funds on. They, it significantly limits us on what we can spend those funds on. We can only spend it on items that help put heads in place. So if it doesn't promote tourism, so I know you think y'all are all contributing this great money to our poppers. We, we have two point one million dollars in encumbered STR funds sitting in the bank that the state won't let us spend on items that we need. I am going to be meeting with our state legislatures and asking for a special dispensation so that we can spend our STR funds, but even then, the state will limit what we can do. So I know that's discouraging, but that's the reality. We can't spend all the money we bring in. And as far as putting data together, we are looking at all the data. When we look at the lack of enforcement we've had historically, and the STR unpaid funds that have not been collected, and we can't spend all the money we bring in, with proper management of fewer numbers, we will actually increase revenues. That's what our predicting software tells us. The amount of money that has been left on the table from this management is somewhat frightening. And when we just run the numbers on roughly a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty STRs, which is the goal in maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years, whatever it is, through attrition to get down to a neighborhood-friendly number, will actually generate more revenue than we do today on an equal basis. So when we hold our town hall, Mr. Francis and I will work on putting presentations together so y'all can actually see our predictions. You can see the trolling tool we use that helps us predict how much revenue we should be collecting, and, and really try to get the facts out there about STRs. So that's my report.
Tomorrow was the deadline for those, for those applications?
Yes, it is.
City Hall typically closes at noon, but we will be staying open until five o'clock tomorrow to help.
Yeah, that's right.
To help manage that.
Oh, and I, I do have one more item. The election is May fourth, and on, next week, the, we are open to take applications for the three at long, at-large alderman positions. So the positions that are up for election this time, this one, this one, and this one. So if you're interested in running again or submitting your name for the ballot, you've got until February sixteenth to do it. And those application packets will be available for you to pick up, and it's online, too. So, okay, that concludes my mayor's report. And next, I believe, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.